Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, September 20, 2022, at 4:30 PM. We'll start out with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, I have Sean Sales, who's the pastor of Loving Springs, here today. He's gonna come and give the invocation today. And I would ask everybody to stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come before you now in the precious and powerful name of Jesus. We come, Father God, to start our meeting with you, that you might be in the midst of everything that we say and do. We come not to lean to our own understanding, but in all our ways to acknowledge you, and you promised you would direct our path. We pray, Father God, for the welfare of our city. We pray, Father God, that it be a city filled with love and compassion and kindness. We pray for the business and decisions that are made today. We pray your blessing upon it all. Be with us throughout this meeting, be in everything that is said and done, and we shall forever give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory. We ask it all now in Jesus' name, for his sake we pray. Amen.
Yeah. Thank you, Pastor Sales. I would ask everybody turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. Thank you, Mr. Sales. We will now begin with our roll call. Mrs. Jackson?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here.
Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
Uh, just my usual. I want to remind anyone in the audience wanting to make public comments at the end of the session, make sure you sign the sheet in the back of the room. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Our first agenda item is approval of minutes for regular meetings, September 6, 2022, special meeting as well on September 13, 2022. Any questions or comments?
Second.
We have second from Sue and second from, uh, or first from Sue, second from Carlos. Any questions or comments? None? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2022-202.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Omar Rogers to the position of Community Centers Manager in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask our Parks and Rec Director, Brent Belcher, to step up and make his recommendation for the position of Community Centers Manager. Brent?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be in the leadoff spot tonight, so I'll be first. Anyway, this is a two-part series. Last, last commission meeting, we came up, we, uh, we hired Jakia Patterson and Braxton Sal from part-time positions into a full-time coordinator position. Part two now is, I believe that City Manager Mizel and, uh, our Human Resources Director, uh, and Aaron Holsey, they, uh, they talked about a reorganization, if you will, of the centers. Second part now brings us to Omar Rogers taking over the center manager position. That'll be over both Parker Bennett and Moxley. Uh, there'll be four staff underneath Omar in this endeavor. Uh, understand Omar's been with us since 2008, started at the Moxley Center, then he moved over to Parker Bennett in 2011. So he's going on 15 years, not quite there, but he's working his way there. Uh, Omar has, you know, had his hands in both programs, everything from after school, summer camps, before school care, all those sort of things, right? So he knows the program side. Uh, the extra benefit we have now, as we talked about, the first, first step was last, last time, the, the promotions. So now Omar enters into not just programming, but mentoring, leadership, managing staffs for their personal growth, and hopefully for their professional endeavors for us for a long time. So, uh, this is a two-part benefit for us. Omar done an excellent job with us, now enters into a management position with us. So Omar is here. Omar, if you don't mind, stand, your family, friends, all those. I see some friends just walking in, that's, uh, Shauna and Braxton right there. Go ahead and just keep, just stand up right there, you're good. Uh, so Omar is here, uh, if you have any questions, love to answer them, but proud of Omar and excited for the future.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Belcher. Omar, do you have other family with you tonight, here tonight?
I do. I have five.
Hello? All right. Well, thank you, and we, uh, yeah, please.
I, I just wanna say it's an honor to especially have this promotion for the son of someone who goes to our, our church, and I've known Nikia like for many, many years, since we were kids. So congratulations, I know it's an early congratulations, but you come from an honorable family.
All right. Let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations, Omar. Municipal Order Number 2022-203.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Jamie Holton to the position of Communications Dispatcher Supervisor in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sue Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
We recently had a resignation in our dispatch division, and we are looking for replacement tonight, and I'd like to ask, uh, Aaron Holsey, actually, let me back up. This is, uh, for the supervisor position, we did have a vacancy, and we're looking to, uh, make a promotion, so I'm gonna ask Chief Delaney to come up, I apologize, to make his recommendation for dispatch supervisor.
Chief?
Mr. Mizel, uh, may I say to the commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to make this recommendation for Jamie Holton, and she's here, if you would, stand, please. She also has her mother and father here with her tonight, John and Cassandra. Um, Jamie's been on our team since 2018. She's been in dispatch, she's also one of the trainers in dispatch, and it's, uh, a pleasure to recommend her tonight. She has a servant's heart. Jamie applied for this position in the past, uh, and didn't get the position. Right after the, um, we selected someone, she came forward and she asked the communications manager, what can I do to improve my skills so I'm a better candidate next time? On her own, she took on those skills and those tasks, and she started becoming an informulator in dispatch, and she took on all the, she took all the suggestions that we gave her. Uh, so it's, uh, my pleasure to recommend someone and show that loyalty to someone who stuck with us during the hard times, during the tornado, she was there, and someone who has really a servant's heart. So I'd ask for your permission to promote Jamie Holton tonight.
All right. Thank you for being here, Jamie, and good to see your family here as well. All right. Let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations, Jamie. Municipal Order Number 2022-204.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of John Williams to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, we are always looking for, uh, good police officers. We have, still have some vacancies to fill, and I'd like to ask Aaron Holsey, our HR Director, to come up now and make a recommendation to fill this position. Aaron?
Good afternoon. Um, as of today, not, not far into the future, but as of today, we are sitting with 19 vacancies due to various resignations, retirements, and new positions within the Police Department. Um, all year long, we are accepting applications for certified police officers, so this means that they've already gone to academy and taken their oath at another agency in the state of Kentucky, or received reciprocal agreement from another state. So, um, would like to present tonight John Williams, um, for the position of Police Officer. He is certified. John, you snuck in the back, if you don't mind standing, please. Um, uh, so John is with the Scottsville Police Department, and as you can see, serves in the Army National Guard. Um, he's also been a dispatcher and a firefighter. Um, so, um, he will be joining us, he will be going through, um, kind of a modified PTO program where he learns the ins and outs of Bowling Green Police Department, and then, um, we will, um, get him on the streets on his own. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Quite a resume, John, and dispatcher as well, Army, you get a little bit of everything. So you bring in a lot to the table that we will benefit in our Police Department, and we're happy, in a moment, to have you join our force, so congratulations in advance. All right. Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations, John. Municipal Order Number 2022-205.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Amanda Mia Jones to the position of Communications Dispatcher Two in the Police Department.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So we are currently, uh, six down in dispatch, this would get us to five, I believe, with this recommendation. I'd like to ask Aaron to come back up and, and, uh, give you the recommendation for this position. Aaron?
Great, thank you. So similarly, year-round, we are also accepting applications for certified dispatchers. Uh, they don't necessarily take an oath, but they do have to attend academy, um, and they have to be certified by the state of Kentucky. So, um, Mia has already gone through that process. Um, she is a dispatcher with Logan County Emergency. Um, so Mia, could you stand, please? Um, Mia is not here with any family tonight, um, but we are very excited to welcome her into our family, um, with the skills that she bring, just like police officer, she'll go through a general training to go over, um, our software and, and our programs, um, but then hopefully she'll be able to, um, get dispatching quickly. So let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Aaron, and I see we have your supervisor here tonight, so thank you for being here. All right. Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations, Mia. Municipal Order Number 2022-206.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of a contract with Phoenix Safety Outfitters LLC of Springfield, Ohio, for structural firefighting turnout gear in an amount not to exceed $2,925 per set.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Uh, turnout gear, as you know, is, uh, the most critical piece of gear that the fire department, uh, has to, to maintain. We went out for bid last October for, uh, for these turnout gear, and got a bid for $2,531, uh, $2,531 per set with, uh, Phoenix Safety Outfitters LLC. We had an option to renew that agreement, uh, two years from last year, so we went to them, uh, they proposed a 15 and a half percent increase. Uh, we checked around with the other, uh, bidders at, that, that would propose last year, uh, their bids were gonna be, or increases were gonna be similar, wasn't even, uh, exceeding that, so we are coming back to you tonight recommending that we, uh, renew our contract with, uh, Phoenix Safety Outfitters. Uh, the 15 and a half percent would, would, uh, equate to $2,925 per set. Uh, we do have that, uh, budgeted in our Fire Improvement Fund and can cover that amount, so we are recommending, uh, the renewal of this contract with Phoenix Safety Outfitters LLC. Chief Brooks is here tonight, can answer any, any of your questions on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners, questions? None? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2022-207.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2023-01 for asphalt overlay project for CW Lampkin Park from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $234,855.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So we were, uh, planning on doing some repaving over at Lampkin Park, this is in your FY23 budget. Uh, we went out for bid and only got, uh, one bid from Scotty's Contracting and Stone. Uh, that bid came in at $298, $650, but we did have some options for deductions, those are shown in your packets. And so there was five, uh, there were five alternates that we could pick and choose from, and so there's various parking lots over in Lampkin, uh, Brent's here can explain this further, but we had to go with, uh, eliminating, uh, alternates one, two, and five to get us in, uh, in budget at the $234, $855 number. And so we are recommending, uh, awarding the bid, uh, with deductions of areas one, two, and five, and therefore we will be paving area three and four, which, uh, I think in your memo is main, is the main, uh, parking lots over in Lampkin Park. Uh, Brent's here, can answer any of your questions you might have, but this gets us back, uh, within budget, and I'm, uh, thinking we'll probably have to go back next year and try to pick up the other ones, uh, as we can afford them and get them back into budget. So, again, Brent Belcher's here, can answer your questions, but we are recommending, uh, the $234, $855 amount with Scotty's for Lampkin Park.
Mizel? Commissioners? None? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2022-208.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2023-12 for Police Department ammunition from Keisler Police Supply, Inc. of Jeffersonville, Indiana, TXAT LLC of Houston, Texas, Advance Outdoors, Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, in a total amount of $104,404.
So moved.
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner, uh, Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Police Department, uh, is in need of some practice ammunition for the range, as well as duty ammunition while they're on duty. Uh, we went out to bid, got five, uh, responses on our bids, uh, that's in your packets from those five, uh, companies. Uh, we broke it down between the practice and the, and the on-duty, and so we would like to recommend, uh, the award of the practice ammunition, 186, 500, 186,500 rounds of nine-millimeter to the TXAT Company at 39,165, and then another 119,000 rounds of, uh, the 223 rifle and the 556 to the TXAT Company totaling 46,410, uh, which brings you to a total of 85,575 for practice ammunition. Uh, then for the duty ammunition, uh, going with two other different companies, uh, with, for the nine-millimeter, nine-millimeter Vance Outdoors was the lowest at $4,925. Uh, the 223 rifle, again, was Vance Outdoors for $5,008. And then, uh, the 308 came in, uh, pointing towards Keisler's, uh, they were the low bid on that for $4,895. So total, uh, on-duty ammunition was the 14, 829, uh, combined with the 85, 575 for practice, uh, gives you 100,404 total, and we award those to the, uh, three different companies. It's just cheaper that way to piecemeal it out and go with the cheapest one for each, each type of ammo. Chief Delaney's here, can answer any of your questions on this, um, this bid award.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2022-209.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of two vehicles through bid number 2023-07, and by non-competitive negotiations with Hunt Ford Chrysler of Franklin, Kentucky, in a total amount of $85,502.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
In the FY23 budget, in the capital, uh, budget part, we had budget for two, uh, trucks, uh, one for fleet and one for police. We went out for bid, uh, back in August and did not get any bids, and so, um, we determined this was a non-competitive negotiation. Uh, we went shopping and found some trucks at Hunt Ford Chrysler in Franklin, Tennessee. Uh, the fleet truck, we found one for $40,670, and then we found one for police logistics for $45,832 with the things we needed on these trucks. So the total, uh, for these two purchases, uh, would be 85, 502, uh, all coming from the Equipment Replacement Fund 301, and, uh, Chief Delaney is here, and so is Greg, can answer any of your questions on these purchases. It is just getting hard to find vehicles.
Mizel? Questions? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2022-210.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2023-13 for fiscal year 2023 street overlay from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $2,145,365.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Perigin.
This is our annual overlay bid, uh, we went out for bid, and again, uh, one bidder, Scotty's Contracting, came in at $2,678. Uh, that was slightly over budget, and so, uh, we went and, and discussed that with them, and, uh, we came back with a $2,145,365 price figure, and, uh, they agreed to that, uh, to meet our budget. And so proposed, uh, street paving is in your packets, long list of these. I will want, I do want to make sure that everyone understands these are subject to change, they're, uh, some of them are awaiting street cuts and, uh, Public Works, Works around those as much as possible so we don't mess up our new paving. And so, but this is the proposed list, uh, subject to change, but, uh, hopefully will hold true as much as possible. This is the ones we think we can, uh, afford and, and, and get under the budget total of the 2.1. And, uh, Greg and Melissa are here tonight to answer any questions you might have on this.
Question? Would you all mind just explaining to the public just a couple of things? Uh, first, um, you know, how do we prioritize, know what kind of roads we're gonna overlay this year? When can we expect the overlay to happen? And then where can they find a list of which streets we're doing this year?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Mizel. Um, I'm Melissa Cansler with the Public Works Department. We have an outside consultant come in early in the year and basically drive a third of our streets. Our, our city is divided into three zones, so each year we do one zone, so, and they have specialized equipment that looks at all the different distresses, uh, from rutting to cracking to other types of failures, and that comes back to us in, um, a format that we can import into our asset management software, which is called Cartograph. Um, each of those street segments, and we go block to block, are, um, rated, it's called overall condition index, OCI. Um, again, that gives us kind of a starting point, um, so we look at those, we look at our budget, um, and, and kind of, it points staff in the right direction on, let's go look at these streets, cause they are, they are projected to be worse. So we do put our eyes on every single street, uh, we, we prioritize there. And honestly, I feel like about 80% of the time, it's correct, the data's correct, so we have a good starting point. Um, this year, um, I did put a lot of streets in this budget, so I want to clarify, the, the bids came in high, we weren't sure what the unit prices would be, cause they had been even higher. Um, so we capped our purchase, um, order not to exceed. So we're gonna do as many streets as we can with that amount. Uh, another thing, too, with our overlay bid, is there's an asphalt index, uh, that can fluctuate, so if prices come down, so does our unit price for asphalt, so we can maybe add some more on down the road. So the list that's in the packet is, is preliminary. Again, those streets, again, we hope to start this contract ASAP, so as soon as we get all the contracts in place, uh, insurance requirements straightened out, you know, we hope within the month we'll be paving. Um, there are some streets we're holding for utility, uh, work, much like what BGMU's doing on the bypass right now, they have that work to do in our city streets as well. So we want to make sure they're out of the way before we pave those streets. So in the event they don't get to those streets this year, um, that's gonna help us come in at our budget amount. Uh, but those streets will go at the top of the list for FY24. So we do intend to wrap this contract up, um, June of next year, so some paving this fall, asphalt plants close in the wintertime, uh, so we'll start back up early April, late March of next year to finish the contract.
Melissa, just how many, can you give us an estimate, how many miles of streets we have within the city?
There are, um, miles of streets are somewhere upward of 250, and that lane miles is on into the 500, 550 lane miles, and so that's two-lane roads, three-lane roads. Um, so there's a lot of, um, and we're getting more and more every year. You know, every time we annex a subdivision, uh, for maintenance or, or areas of town, we get more and more city streets. So that, um, that budget, uh, we rely on to keep those roads in good condition, uh, but we do put our eyes on every, almost every single street, every single year with this project. You're welcome.
Commissioners? Now, Greg, are, is this, um, your last meeting here? Is this your last agenda item that you're staying for?
No, there's one more.
There's one more? All right, well...
I can get up and talk if you want.
No, no, just, just want to make sure, um, but Mr. Meredith has put in his retirement and, uh, kinda surprised us all, but we're wishing, but we'll get to that in just a minute, but thank you, Melissa. Any other questions on this agenda item? All right. Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2022-211.
Municipal order approving and accepting seven housing vouchers for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Just a piece of great news, uh, we're getting seven additional housing choice vouchers, um, to, to get us to 737. These are, uh, the, the regular vouchers, um, seven of them. Uh, like to thank Elvira for all her work on this. I don't know if Brent did any work on this or not, but Elvira's here, do you want to add anything to this, Elvira? Comment?
We're just keeping an eye on it and applying for anything that we can.
Comment? Um, again, I just want to echo those, that thanks. Um, it's really incredible to look at these numbers where, just in two years, we've added 131 additional vouchers for our community, knowing how hard it's been over the years, just, you know, limping by, you know, a couple here and there, um, to see that we're able to help so many more families, um, find some stability and, uh, be able to, you know, thrive instead of just kind of getting by and just surviving. So thank you for, um, pursuing these additional vouchers and creating more affordable, stable housing for folks, so thank you so much.
I want to echo that as well, but I want to ask Brent, have we lost any vouchers? I know sometimes they can move since the last two years.
No. Just grown. We haven't lost any. People will, uh, these are, you can port with a voucher, where you have a voucher in Bowling Green, you move to another community, uh, but then what happens is that person can then be absorbed in that community, and we get our voucher back, and so they stay in our rotation. And so we really tried to focus over the last several years of making sure that we're impacting the people who call Bowling Green home first. Uh, and so those are the people that we're prioritizing through our waiting list and making sure that we're, we're targeting our vouchers to help those in our community. But no, they continue to grow.
Last question. I know some section eight vouchers can actually be used for, towards the purchase of a home. Has that been implemented or do you know if anybody has?
Do have a few homeownership vouchers that we've had. I think 13 is the number. Uh, that's pretty good. Uh, 13, uh, that we have that we're, instead of we're assisting with rent, we're assisting with mortgage payments. Same rules apply, but we're assisting on the mortgage payment instead of the rental payment.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Brent, thank you, Elvira. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022 Dash Two Twelve.
Municipal Order Approving a Memorandum of Understanding for Utility Assistance Program Funding Between the City of Bowling Green and United Way of Southern Kentucky Inc.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel. So if you all will recall, after the December 11th tornado, there was, uh, in the General Assembly this past spring, there was a, a House Bill, uh, House Bill Five that created the West Kentucky Safe Fund Grant. And we submitted an application for that totaling $970,000 or so. We have recently awarded some money for the stump and tree removal on private property. You all did that a couple of meetings ago. We also awarded, uh, the replanning of some trees, uh, to partner with Operation Pride. Uh, coming to you tonight with the other last piece of this, $50,000 for utility assistance. We would like to partner with United Way, uh, on this, on this piece, uh, to administer the utility assistance, uh, to the survivor, to the survivors, their, their case management program. So, uh, this is, this would be the last piece of that $970,000 grant. Most of it went to reimbursing a lot of the costs that we had with the city, uh, that they approved and, uh, the things that FEMA were not going to cover. And so, um, we have awarded this or recommending awarding this 50,000 to United Way, uh, to administer. Brent Childers worked on this and can help me answer any questions y'all might have.
I have one question, sorry. Uh, so in terms of being impacted by the tornado, uh, who qualifies for help with utility assistance?
This is really focused on those that are receiving case management services. Right now there's 209 families in case management. Uh, if you remember from some of the talks that I've done over the, over the last several months, we lost about 475 units, had another 500 units damaged. Uh, 209 is where we're at now for families in case management. So that's targeting, uh, those with the least ability to recover from the storms. Uh, and so that's going to be, um, based on income, based on other factors, that, that they're going to need extra assistance. And that's where case management comes in. So that's really what this is targeting, uh, because they're already identified, they're already been working with them, they've already been providing assistance through other things. Uh, but whenever the idea came up for the safe funds back in February, I guess that's right, whenever we put this together, uh, I knew utilities was going to be an issue as homes were still exposed, uh, you know, delays in construction, you know, people having tarps over windows and, and energy costs. And that's where we came up with. And now, what now, back then we didn't have the mechanism, now we have the mechanisms for them when you use the case management system.
Thanks again for taking care of our community after the storm and making sure even those little things that maybe some folks won't think about in terms of the long-term ongoing costs. Um, thank you all so much for working so hard to fill those gaps. So all of our family, or our, our families and community can just, uh, recover stronger.
Uh, Brent, can you remind the public that there's a meeting on the 22nd of September? What that is?
Yes, uh, so the LTRG, so may swap hats to the Chair of the LTRG, is organizing another tornado outreach event at Jennings Creek on the 22nd from fourth.
Five to eight.
Five to eight, thank you. Uh, five to eight o'clock. It's going to be in the backside of Jennings Creek and, and we're, we're trying to cast another wide net to make sure, uh, if there's families that are out there that haven't gotten into case management, that aren't receiving assistance, uh, how do we get those families back in this queue? So we're trying to make sure that we cast that wide net. Also, we've worked with the, uh, state to get a representative from the Insurance Commission down to, to sit with families one-on-one because that was one of the big issues that we heard from, uh, owners was dealing with insurance. Uh, and so we've got a representative for coming to that meeting. And also in October, I mean, uh, is it next Thursday, the 29th, there's one at Sokey Marketplace?
That's correct. It's 636 Center Street, 5 to 8 p.m.
5 to 8 p.m. at Sokey Marketplace. Uh, and thi- this is for anybody in the tornado impacted area, City County. Uh, we're trying to find some central points. Jennings Creek, uh, that area has received 41% of the residential damage as part of the tornado from, uh, I-165 to Veterans Memorial. So we really want to do more outreach in that area. We did one in Magnolia Nutwood back in July, uh, there at Eastwood Campus. Uh, and then the Sokey one is really to make sure we're providing access to, uh, those impacted on the northern end of the county as this tornado extended, uh, north past Warren East High School.
Thank you. Mr. Mizel, you want to comment? Uh, no, I'm, I just wanted to, um, make sure that these, these two, Brent, were for people that have been living in their houses, uh, that couldn't really get good energy efficiency. Did you say anything about that that helps?
Yeah, I talked about that. Uh, but it's those that are in that case management process and United Way is already identified through their partners. Anything else?
Brent, appreciate your continued leadership and the long-term recovery group was something that we didn't know what to put together. Um, you helped us put it together and you said you shouldn't be in charge and then you were in charge, uh, because that's because people voted you in their vote of confidence for this continued care. And there has been means, it's just connecting those means, but there's also people need to know, they have to raise their hand. And they can't expect something to come to them when no one knows what their need is. So we appreciate that, continued care. Um, you know, we're going on, we're over, almost nine months over.
That's right.
And, you know, we're going to have that one-year anniversary and people are going to say, how did Bowling Green do it? And this is one of those effective means. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions or comments. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022 Dash Two Thirteen.
Municipal Order Approving and Authorizing the City Law Department to Negotiate the Purchase of Properties Necessary for the Weston Street Intersection Improvements and Further Authorizing Appropriate City Officials to Execute Deeds, Easements, and Other Documents Related to the Land Purchases Necessary for the Project.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel. In the FY '23 budget, again, in the capital improvement plan, we budgeted for, uh, roundabouts for Ashley Circle, Patrick Way, and Highland Way along Weston Avenue. Uh, tonight, we would like your permission to proceed with any, uh, right-of-way acquisition with the money we do have in budget and proceed with that to get these, uh, moving as quickly as possible. We're not sure we have enough money for construction. We'll see when those bids go out, but, uh, we would like to proceed with any and all, uh, right-of-way acquisition as soon as possible, asking you for permission to proceed with that. That's this item. Greg Meredith is here, can I answer any of your questions? Might have.
Let's make him answer a question on his last meeting.
Yes, I, um, just went to go pick up my son this afternoon, so I definitely have questions about how long, because that roundabout is working really well, but then we get stopped at the next stop signs. So what do we think just realistically the timeline is to get it all going?
Well, I mean, the whole thing, I, I don't know that I could give you a, a timeframe based upon budget. You know, prices have been coming in so much higher than they were before. So, you know, um, it would be great if we could put all three of those additional roundabouts to complement the one at, at Rockingham, uh, in the budget for this year and be able to afford getting those all complete. Uh, but at this point, probably only two, two to three. I mean, we'll have to see again how the bu, how the bids come in. Um, but yeah, that, we think that they'll make a huge difference along that corridor.
Greg, you said they're all designed at this point?
They are all final design. We're working through just a few little minor details at this point, but that's what, when that final design is complete, we'll be ready to go and, and negotiate with easements or even so, not much, but a little bit of permanent right-of-way that we'll need to, to take to make those, uh, roundabouts fit in those existing intersections.
I dragged you up here, I'm going to ask the question.
Yeah.
What order are you going in?
So I think that the order first would be at, at Ashley Circle. Um, there's more traffic, you know, because of the high school and folks coming in from that direction. And then, you know, the logical order would be Patrick and then Highland last. Um, so that's, that's kind of what we're thinking now. Jeff, don't you think? So Ashley, Ashley Circle with the improvements that we're doing, where Ashley Circle, um, you know, intersects with Scottsville Road, and then on the other side over next to Double Dog's, Ashley Street on the Convention Center side, we think that'll really make a difference and, and folks, uh, that have to wait through, you know, multiple cycles of light, of lights there at Scottsville Road that are state-controlled because of the signal system that, that Scottsville Road's on to try to, you know, uh, free up morning and afternoon queues, people coming to work and, and going home, uh, that we think that'll make a real difference. So with that, the Ashley Circle, Ashley Street roundabout, uh, there at Weston will be the number one priority.
Okay, well, I don't think everybody on Highland is going to be too sad to find out their last, as I'm going up and down with my neighbors there.
Yeah. Uh, they'll, they'll love it when it comes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I would just like to say, don't you think since you're starting all these projects, you should stay to see them finished?
I think you're right, Melinda. I, I don't, I mean.
I think we should require that personally.
We can talk later. Thank you.
We're not done. Mr. Mizel wants to say something. Now's as good a time as any, right? I think so. So I didn't know when to make this, this statement, whether at the beginning or at the end, but I don't want you to slip out with, before these second readings, but, uh, Greg, in my term here, is city manager and CFO. And no offense to any prior Public Works Directors, but top-notch, best Public Works Director this city has ever had. And everything that, uh, I've ever gone to Greg with, uh, over the years, Greg is, is always trying to figure out a way to do it. And, uh, he's, he's, he's of that mindset. It's not, no, can't do that. It's, it's, let's find a way, we'll figure it out. And, uh, that's just Greg. What Greg has brought to our senior management team with his, with his leadership and his positive attitude, uh, his team player, Public Works has worked closer with every other department that we've ever, ever had. Um, he, he offers a hand up, any and everybody needing hand, whether it be Parks, which is his, his, I don't want to say big brother, little brother, whatever you want to call it, but they, they work a lot on stuff together, uh, as well as other departments too. But Greg, I can't, when he told me, I was kind of in a shock and I didn't fall on the floor, but I, I felt like I was going to. But I said, you had too, you had too good of a time on your vacation, didn't you? And he said, no, he just said, it's time. But, um, I'm very happy for Greg in his, uh, his announcement. I envy him. And, uh, I just can't thank you enough, Greg, for the unbelievable job you've done for the city of Bowling Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Love you guys. Thanks for the support. Thanks for the support. And it wouldn't happen, all these things that are great that we're doing together, wouldn't happen without your all support, senior management, uh, team support. And, um, that's our job, you know? Our, our Public Works folks along with everybody else in the city, it's our job to do things to support.
God bless you, man.
Thank you.
You've been awesome.
Thank you. It's our, it's our job to do those things that citizens, you know, want, they deserve. We live in one of the greatest cities around, so why not make it the best we can do? So that's what I've tried to do and I know that the folks that are there will carry that on. Uh, I love and respect all those and you guys too. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Greg. All right, there's a motion on the floor. No further questions or comments. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance BG 2022 Dash Forty-Eight, so our first reading is non-binding.
Ordinance relating to Budget Amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2023.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen, Mr. Mizel. As you know, uh, from time to time, we have to make amendments to our budgets. Uh, this would be our first one for FY '23. And I will hand it off to Katie to make some comments on this or answer questions you might have. Katie?
Pretty standard for our first budget amendment. Um, we're accepting some, um, donations we've received, some grants we've received, most of which have already been brought to you in other actions. Uh, so this is sort of a cleanup and making sure that we are, uh, up to date with everything that is in our financial system. Um, I'm trying to see if there's anything significant. Um, does anyone have any questions? I think the most significant piece to this is on the last page. Uh, WKU, uh, the city issued GO bonds back in 2002 and refunded those in 2010, 2011 to refinance them. Um, but WKU has determined that they wanted to finance some other projects, so they ruled what was left of this debt into their financing, which paid off our GO bond. And therefore the city is no longer obligated under that particular bond issue, so that frees up our debt, um, limit amount, which we, we still weren't anywhere near. But, um, that $10 million has been paid off. WKU was paying 100% of that debt service through the years and would have continued until it was done, but in this case they went ahead and refunded it, got it under, uh, a new financing that they were doing, and it's no longer an obligation of the city.
Thank you, Katie. Commissioners? All right, no questions. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022 Dash Forty-Five, it's our second reading is binding.
Ordinance relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance admitting to Classification Pay Schedule G for General Classified Employees of the City of Bowling Green for Fiscal Year 2023.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen. Uh, this is a five-no vote, the last meeting. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? None at this time? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance BG 2022 Dash Forty-Six, our second reading is binding.
Ordinance granting franchise related to telecommunications system. Ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise, Two Step Fiber LLC, a Kentucky limited liability company, for the use of rights away for the operation and maintenance of a telecommunications or related non-cable system within the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and further authorizing the execution of a franchise agreement.
So moved. Second.
Unanimous by everybody, I believe, but I'll say Carlos first and second by, uh, Dana Beasley Brown, Mr. McClung, see you out there. Joe, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, this was a five-and-o unanimous, very, um, agreed by the Board of Commissioners and something that we have been talking about for the last year and nine months at this board and was in our strategic plan. We're extremely proud that you are taking on this endeavor with a local company, Stoop Bridge. And I just wanted to say that this is, um, monumental, um, to see what's going on in our community because we have several telecommunications companies putting fiber out to the premises, which is our homes. And we're very, very excited about that. Commissioners?
I'd just make a quick comment. So maybe last week sometime, my wife, she has to interact like, she worked at the hospital. So she has to interact with their, um, I guess their, their tech guys. And so one of the tech guys came over there, he said, man, I can't wait to get rid of Spectrum. And he was like, because it's been a monopoly far too long. And she was like, well, you know, the city commission did it. She was like, yeah, I'm, I'm happy. He's like, well, my husband sits on the city commission as well. So I'm glad that it's no longer a monopoly here in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and it's going to bring more fiber to the homes and it's going to drive, hopefully drive down those costs, but expand, you know, the, the user base so it can make money as well.
Okay, can you, can you come up here for a minute? I know we, this is our second reading, I get that. But there's people watching today that weren't watching a couple of weeks ago. So personally, I want to say how excited I am that Stup, a local company, is investing in our community. You're, you're making a huge commitment and a huge investment in our community. But would you kind of reiterate it, kind of what you're doing and, and why this is important and how Stup Bridge, or I'm sorry, Stup Fiber is going to be the leader of this pack?
Well, like I said, last time we were here, we're basically going to be a competitive carrier. And so we're going to go head-to-head with, with, I'm sorry, I don't speak into these very often, uh, but we're going to go head-to-head with Charter, Spectrum, and, uh, the AT&amp;Ts. So we're going to offer people a choice and we think we're going to be very successful.
Are you going to be competitive in the pricing? My, that's what folks want to know. What am I getting and how much is it going to cost me?
We haven't settled in on the exact pricing, but it is going to be in the exact same range that you pay for the billboard prices that you see advertised for some of the bigger carriers.
And then explain about the services that you're going to have. Um, uh, I understand you're going to have an office that where people can go to, to pay their bill or to speak with you or?
We, like I mentioned last time, we're initially going to be setting up our back Like I mentioned last time, we're initially going to be setting up our back office in the WKU Center for Research and Development.
The old mall.
The old mall, right. Yes, Mayor. And so, that will be our initial, you know, footprint here in the City of Bowling Green. And then, our hope is, within the next five to six months, that we can have a retail location either on Campbell Lane or Scottsville Road. We know that real estate's kind of a premium, and so, you know, we're, fingers crossed, we get a good location.
Well, you're contagious with the enthusiasm, Derek. I've had lunch with him recently, and, and just the willingness to just, just jump off and run with it is, is really exciting, really exciting for me, exciting, because we've been working on this for a long time. And, and your enthusiasm is wonderful, and I believe you'll be very successful here.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And just one more clarification for the public. So, because Stup Fiber, are you also offering, you know, a cable option or a, you know, another streaming option for folks as part of your packaging?
We are going to be partnering with a company that will help us develop that process. And so, we're looking at getting a third party to come in and help the end-users with that experience. There are so many streaming options out there. And so, we found a company that we can actually work with that can do the questionnaire, what do you like to watch, what's your family interested in, and then guide them to the services that best fit their home.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to kind of echo what others are saying and say, "Thank you so much, and I can't wait till you all get to my neighborhood." So, thank you.
I do understand your phone started blowing up after our last meeting and the newspaper, I think West for that, getting that out to the public, that y'all's phones started blowing up with, "When can I get this serviced?"
Really did. We were a little bit surprised by just, you know, coming and pitching this to you guys and going through that process and not running any ads or anything, but we had a tremendous outpouring of, "When you coming, when you coming, when you coming?" And so, we're, we started a really cool back-office platform. It's called demand aggregation. And so, we've launched our website, so people have been going and showing us where they live. And the map has got dots all over it. And so, we're really, really excited.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Thank you.
All right. Let's do this. Have a roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations. Ordinance Number BG 2022-47. It's our second reading is binding.
Ordinance relating to WKU gateway to downtown Bowling Green, Tiff Development Area and Parking Garage. Ordinance approving amended and restated general obligation lease agreement with Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority, Inc., and approving a mutual release and settlement agreement with Manhattan Capital BG LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. This is our second reading. It was a five-and-o unanimous. Are any questions or comments? None at this time. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ms. Jackson, she's going to check. We have one, and she's coming. Yep, Jennifer. And I'd like to just make a little announcement and a kudo to Hope Spiller and Ashley Jackson. This is our second commissioner meeting that we have been paperless, pretty much. All the agenda has been on computers. And so, we did it last meeting as a trial run. This one is taking it across the park. It's indexed very easily, but our books were about this big for each person. Took over half a day to put those together. And I just want to say thank you and commend you for your taking us to the next century. So, thank you very much, Ashley.
You too.
All right. Ms. Morland, you would like to join us, and you have up to five minutes to communicate to us. Thank you.
Okay. What I wanted to do, I wanted to say thank you to the mayor, because he did go head-to-head with the Secretary of the Board, of the County Board, and asked him. So, I really appreciate the mayor. I just wanted the city commissioners to step forward and tell me if it's state, if it's in state or if it's a county that makes the decision. So, but I am, I am in a good mood, because I just started school and I'm going to become a medical assistant. So, that's really cool. But, but to make a long story short, I really do believe that we should find out about the tax for people that is able to get a 10% discount on taxes for cars. Because half of this town, there's a lot of people on disability. And if you get the disability people on your side, you would win. So, you know, and I just would like for you to talk to the County Board and find out who is doing this, and find out what to do to change it. And I want to say thank you to the mayor and thank you for helping me. Thank, you took, you took on the County Board. You didn't take it on, but you talked to the Secretary, and that's, that's saying a lot.
Patient, yes.
Yes, that's saying a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your time. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is October 4th at 2022.
No, that's case.
I'm sorry. It's not. We are not having one during the school break for fall, which is being recognized by the county and by the city. And so, our next meeting will be October 18th at 2022, 4:30. We adjourn. Thank you.